Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Lancaster County Council to order. Ask that the clerk note for the record that a quorum of council is present, that public notice of the meeting, including the meeting agenda, has been posted to required length of time in the lobby of the county administration building and on the county website, and that the news media was notified of the meeting time and place. I welcome you to your county council meeting. I would ask that you take a moment to turn off or place on vibrate any cell phones or pagers. Thank you for not wearing any hats or caps in the council chambers, and please be considerate of others in the room by refraining from conversations during the meeting. I ask that you please stand and join county council for the pledge of allegiance followed by the invocation given this evening by council member Steve Harper.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. I'm Ronnie Wall, and I'm the chairman of the Board of Voter Registration and Elections of Lancaster County. We're going to turn that over now for them to call their meeting to order. Ms. Merk Dupont?
There. Thank you. Good evening. Thank you. That's very nice. I'm Ronnie Wall, and I'm the chairman of the Board of Voter Registration and Elections of Lancaster County. The other members of our Board of Voter Registration and Elections who are here tonight are Norman Anderson, Tom Page from the far side, Darrell Reed, and Steve Willis, sitting next to me. I'd like to explain why we're here for this portion of this meeting tonight. Pursuant to Lancaster County ordinance number 2025-1966, the general election to be held on November 4th, 2025 will include a question approving the imposition of a special sales and use tax in the amount of 1% in Lancaster County for not more than 10 years or until a total of $253 million has been collected, all of that for the use in funding transportation projects. Also, pursuant to Lancaster County ordinance number 2025-1966, the general election to be held on November 4th will include a question authorizing the issuance of not exceeding $100 million of general obligation bonds of Lancaster County payable from the special sales and use tax described a moment ago. Section 4-37-30A1 of the Code of Laws of South Carolina, 1976, as amended, states that "public hearing must be conducted at least 14 days before the referendum after publication of a notice setting forth the date, time, and location of the public hearing." The notice of this public hearing was published in the Lancaster News on September 24th, 2025. This public hearing is being held as required by state law. Lancaster County Council has graciously agreed, as you heard a moment ago, to allow this public hearing to be held at the commencement of its regular meeting this evening. Now, before declaring this public hearing open, I would like to explain that a public hearing is not a forum for the public to engage in a discussion or dialogue. This will not be a question-and-answer session. Comments and views expressed during this public hearing are being recorded. Each person wishing to comment will be given three minutes to make their comments. Please come to the front here and stand at the microphone to speak. Before you begin your comments, please state your name and address for the record. Your three minutes will start when you have provided your name and address. I now open this public hearing. As of just a few moments ago, no one had signed up for this portion of this meeting this evening for the public hearing on transportation tax. But I would like to ask now, what I would ask if everybody who signed up had their chance to speak, and that is, at the end of the final speaker who had signed up, the floor would be open for anyone else who would like to make a comment with still holding the limit of three minutes per person and identifying yourself with your name and address. So I'll ask now, is there anybody who might be here for some other purpose tonight to hear this, be involved in this meeting, if they would like to make a comment related to the transportation and sales tax that'll be on the ballot in November? I'm trying to make sure I'm fair, seeing any hands. I do not see any hands, and I don't hear anybody requesting a chance to speak on the transportation tax. So I would now declare this public hearing, public hearing has been concluded and is closed. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, sir. Okay, we're going to move on now to item five on the agenda, approval of council agenda. Do I have a motion to approve? Have a motion for Ms. Griffin. Have a second for Mr. Louise.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to move item 9G up to item 9A.
We have a motion from Mr. Moss Deller and a second from Mr. Harper to move item 9G to item 9A. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. It's unanimous. Okay, we'll go back now and vote on the amended ordinance. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Agenda, yeah, sorry. And on the amended agenda. Thank you. Okay, now we'll go to special presentations. We have a special presentation this evening. Item 7A.
Mr. Chairman, do you have some citizens?
I'm sorry, I jumped ahead of citizens' comments. You're correct. All right, it's time for citizens' comments. We now come to citizens' comments. Please bear in mind that this is not a period of dialogue with council or a question-and-answer period. This is your opportunity to address council with your concerns. I ask that you address your remarks to council as a body and not to any individual council member. Please speak into the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and you will have up to three minutes to address council. Your time will not start until you have provided your name and address. First up, we have Mr. Paul Coburg.
First of all, can you hear me? All right. First of all, good evening. I'm here, I'm in support of a nine-month moratorium on new residential development.
Could you give us your name and address?
Oh, that's a good point. Paul Coburg, 26504 Sand Piper Court, Indianland, South Carolina, which is Sun City. All right, to begin, I'm in support of a nine-month moratorium on new residential development. I'm presenting information about EMS, fire rescue, sheriff's department, and all. This information came, the information I will present came from FOIA requests and department presentations during the 25-26 budget process. Lancaster County's first responder departments are already struggling to keep up with the current demand for services. There are thousands more resident units already approved, not just in areas affected by districts 1, 4, and 7, but also other districts throughout the county, mostly in districts 2, 5, and in the city of Lancaster. When calls exceed the number of first responders in the Panhandle, units from other districts are assigned, causing a domino effect of services and not available in other county districts. I'm not going to read all the stats listed on the handouts that were just distributed to you. Did you all get them? Very good. But I ask you to please read them prior to the second ordinance reading. Bottom line is that all first responder department resources are stretched thin, and this is throughout the districts of Lancaster County, and it's only going to get worse. That concludes it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Okay, Ms. Regina Watt?
Regina, I'm sorry.
Regina, yes. Good afternoon. Regina Watts, 3562 Oak Ridge Road, Lancaster, South Carolina. We came today, this afternoon in concern for the roads in our community. Down in the Oak Ridge community, this road was repaired in '74, and we're supposed to be on the list to have another payment in 10 years after, and the 10 years and 10 years to up to 51 years now, the same road. And the repairs are major repairs because it's causing a lot of front end damage on cars and as well as damaging the community. And we just wanted to bring that to the concern, but after getting here this afternoon and speaking with councilmen and some of the others that we're going to take care of this on a later timing, I think tomorrow they're supposed to be following up. We would just like to appreciate
Okay, we have a joint meeting tonight with the Board of Voter Registration and Elections at Lancaster County. We're going to turn that over now for them to call their meeting to order. Ms. Merk Dupont.
There. Thank you. Good evening. Thank you. That's very nice. I'm Ronnie Wall, and I'm the Chairman of the Board of Voter Registration and Elections of Lancaster County. The other members of our Board of Voter Registration and Elections who are here tonight are Norman Anderson, Tom Page from the far side, Darrell Reed, and Steve Willis, sitting next to me. I'd like to explain why we're here for this portion of this meeting tonight. Pursuant to Lancaster County Ordinance Number 2025-1966, the general election to be held on November 4th, 2025 will include a question approving the imposition of a special sales and use tax in the amount of 1% in Lancaster County for not more than 10 years or until a total of $253 million has been collected, all of that for the use in funding transportation projects. Also, pursuant to Lancaster County Ordinance Number 2025-1966, the general election to be held on November 4th will include a question authorizing the issuance of not exceeding $100 million of general obligation bonds of Lancaster County payable from the special sales and use tax described a moment ago. Section 4-37-30A1 of the Code of Laws of South Carolina, 1976, as amended, states that "public hearing must be conducted at least 14 days before the referendum after publication of a notice setting forth the date, time, and location of the public hearing." The notice of this public hearing was published in the Lancaster News on September 24th, 2025. This public hearing is being held as required by state law. Lancaster County Council has graciously agreed, as you heard a moment ago, to allow this public hearing to be held at the commencement of its regular meeting this evening. Now, before declaring this public hearing open, I would like to explain that a public hearing is not a forum for the public to engage in a discussion or dialogue. This will not be a question-and-answer session. Comments and views expressed during this public hearing are being recorded. Each person wishing to comment will be given three minutes to make their comments. Please come to the front here and stand at the microphone to speak. Before you begin your comments, please state your name and address for the record. Your three minutes will start when you have provided your name and address. I now open this public hearing. As of just a few moments ago, no one had signed up for this portion of this meeting this evening for the public hearing on transportation tax. But I would like to ask now, what I would ask if everybody who signed up had their chance to speak, and that is, at the end of the final speaker who had signed up, the floor would be open for anyone else who would like to make a comment with still holding the limit of three minutes per person and identifying yourself with your name and address. So I'll ask now, is there anybody who might be here for some other purpose tonight to hear this, be involved in this meeting, if they would like to make a comment related to the transportation and sales tax that'll be on the ballot in November? I'm trying to make sure I'm fair, seeing any hands. I do not see any hands, and I don't hear anybody requesting a chance to speak on the transportation tax. So I would now declare this public hearing, public hearing has been concluded and is closed. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, sir. Okay, we're going to move on now to Item 5 on the Agenda, Approval of Council Agenda. Do I have a motion to approve? Have a motion for Ms. Griffin? Have a second for Mr. Louise?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to move Item 9G up to Item 9A.
I'll second that. We have a motion from Mr. Moss Deller and a second from Mr. Harper to move Item 9G to Item 9A. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. It's unanimous. Okay, we'll go back now and vote on the amended ordinance. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Agenda. Yeah, sorry. And on the amended agenda. Thank you. Okay, now we'll go to special presentations. We have a special presentation this evening. Item 7A.
Mr. Chairman, do you have some citizens?
I'm sorry, I jumped ahead of citizens' comments. You're correct. All right, it's time for citizens' comments. We now come to citizens' comments. Please bear in mind that this is not a period of dialogue with council or a question-and-answer period. This is your opportunity to address council with your concerns. I ask that you address your remarks to council as a body and not to any individual council member. Please speak into the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and you will have up to three minutes to address council. Your time will not start until you have provided your name and address. First up, we have Mr. Paul Coburg.
First of all, can you hear me? All right. First of all, good evening. I'm here, I'm in support of a nine-month moratorium on new residential development.
Could you give us your name and address?
Oh, that's a good point. Paul Coburg, 26504 Sand Piper Court, Indianland, South Carolina, which is Sun City. All right, to begin. I'm in support of a nine-month moratorium on new residential development. I'm presenting information about EMS, fire rescue, sheriff's department, and all. This information came, the information I will present came from FOIA requests and department presentations during the '25-'26 budget process. Lancaster County's first responder departments are already struggling to keep up with the current demand for services. There are thousands more resident units already approved, not just in areas affected by Districts 1, 4, and 7, but also other districts throughout the county, mostly in Districts 2, 5, and in the city of Lancaster. When calls exceed the number of first responders in the Panhandle, units from other districts are assigned, causing a domino effect of services and not available in other county districts. I'm not going to read all the stats listed on the handouts that were just distributed to you. Did you all get them? Very good. But I ask you to please read them prior to the second ordinance reading. Bottom line is that all first responder department resources are stretched thin. And this is throughout the districts of Lancaster County, and it's only going to get worse. That concludes it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Okay, Ms. Regina Watt. Regina, I'm sorry.
Regina, yes. Good afternoon. Regina Watts, 3562 Oak Ridge Road, Lancaster, South Carolina. We came today, this afternoon in concern by the roads in our community. Down in the Oak Ridge community, this road was repaired in '74, and we're supposed to be on the list to have another payment in 10 years after. And the 10 years and 10 years, up to 51 years now, the same road. And the repairs are major repairs because it's causing a lot of fronting and damage on cars and as well as damaging the community. And we just wanted to bring that to the concern, but after getting here this afternoon and speaking with councilmen and some of the others that we're going to take care of this on a later timing, I think tomorrow they're supposed to be following up, we would just like to appreciate it, the concern, and that's why we just brought it to your attention, if that's okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Trey Marney, same about Oak Ridge Road. Okay. Tony McCammon.
I'm Tony McCammon. I live at 2112 Hartwell Lane, Indianland. I'm here primarily because I lived in central Florida when Disney came in, and I know what it's like to live in a community that is growing so fast that it's just hard for the infrastructure to keep up so that the citizens don't suffer. So I know the kind of pressure that you're under. I want to just bring to light that if you can include mandatory left and right lanes in Indianland with this new tax money, then it will really help for people getting in and out of both residential and commercial properties. Right now, it's a mess on Van Wyck and a lot of places and other off-roads as well, not just 521. But the real difficulty comes when the roads are already congested, which is what's going to happen as soon as Costco and Target and all these other commercial properties stream, you know, come on stream. The roads are going to be congested. What happens when your emergency vehicles can't get down Van Wyck because it's a two-lane road? And there's very little play for cars to get off, for them to get around, and that becomes a real concern for those people that are waiting on those vehicles to get there and also for getting those people then back out on those roadways that are already congested trying to get them to the hospitals that are on 521. And why do we have two hospitals, three hospitals? So I really would like for you to consider making it mandatory to have left and right lanes and our residential and commercial properties coming off of these side roads. And then also to update your impact fees. My husband was a real estate broker in central Florida from the '60s to 2000, and he was primarily, he was exclusively, in investment, development, and commercial properties. So I lived this transition in central Florida. And impact fees are very, very important, and they helped us get through some of the tough times, and we really need those impact fees. I don't know what happened to the impact fees that came earlier that were not collected. I have no clue about that. But we really need some high expectations for road safety, for required landscaping, and signage easements so that we have a community that's developing and looking good and safe at the same time. It's only going to make all of the county a more thriving place to live and be more attractive for everyone to want to move here. So thank you for your time, and I really, I feel for you because you've got a big job ahead.
Thank you. Joe Kohler. And again, and when you come up, if you could give your name and address for the clerk.
Hi, my name is Joe Kohler, 167 Sweetbrier Drive, Indianland. I just want to come here today to show my support for the proposed nine-month moratorium on building. To kind of reiterate what Tony had stated, we have some real issues as it comes to service and support within our districts, and the conditional building, the new building is only going to exacerbate that further. I'd also just like to show some support for the idea of the updated impact fees, and I would like to express if there was a way to stop the waivers as it comes to the impact fees. It's my understanding, I could be wrong, but it's my understanding that a lot of waivers have been given. There's really no point in having impact fees if we're going to waive it for whatever reason there could be. It's the only way we're going to generate the revenue and be able to catch up with the services that we desperately need. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Mr. Gordon Johnston.
Councilmember staff, good evening. Gordon Johnston, 7401 Carmel Executive Park Drive, Charlotte, 28210. Here tonight representing Citri Communities with regards to Items 9B on the agenda this evening. This was before you a few weeks ago. This is the second reading of a requested development agreement extension for the Charlotte Woods Project. Nothing new to report or nothing that has changed since that first reading, but I wanted to let you know that myself, along with our project engineer, are here in the crowd this evening and would be happy to come back up if there are any questions or items needing discussion that we can have input on. So thank you again for your time.
Janey McCoy.
Yes, thank you. My name is Jeanne McCoy. I live at 9213 Whistling Straits Drive in Sun City, Indianland. And I just wish to record my agreement with Ordinance 2025-1992 regarding a nine-month moratorium on residential and commercial building whose first reading takes place tonight. I just wanted to go on the record. Count me in.
Thank you. Jeanne Doyle.
Good evening. Good evening. Jeanne Doyle, 6030 Kings Canyon Way, Treetops. When I first looked at homes in Indianland, local friends thought I was crazy. They told me, oh, you're going to be out in the boonies because there were so few choices for dining and shopping. My response was, it'll come, don't worry. Well, be careful what you wish for. In five short years, traveling around Indianland has become a daily nightmare. Continued residential and business growth has made traveling on 521 a daily game of how long will it take to get to X, Y, or Z. Besides a surge in cars, came a surge of some of the craziest driving I've ever seen, and I traveled all over the company, country professionally, and I thought I had seen it all. Accidents tie up traffic, and the ongoing construction along 521 can add 30 to 40 minutes just to get to 485. Everyone is aware of the upcoming road tax to be voted on in the November election, and as a newer resident, I'm not opposed to contributing to solving some of the road issues because I've moved here and I've contributed to the problem. But what I am opposed to is that past and present county council's planning seems to have been pretty inadequate in not just roads, but schools and emergency services. It's time to stop talking about the problem and put some action behind the words. If the developers want to build here, then let them contribute to the infrastructure. Impose impact fees, it'll assist in building and maintaining the infrastructure in Indianland. Why, as residents, should we foot 100% of the bill? Keep in mind, the proposed road tax is only a little over half of what was proposed and defeated a year ago. So while the funds will help, it isn't going to solve all of the problems. Some of the members of the council do not live in Indianland, but I've got to believe you have to travel north to get to friends, family, jobs, things you want to participate in, in Charlotte. So it's only getting worse, and there's a lot of new building that the city of Lancaster has proposed too that's going to dump onto 521. As you finalize the UDO, and I do think this is a perfect time to put the fees in place, but I also 100% totally support the nine-month moratorium on approval of any new developments. I too wish you luck. It's not a pretty job. I can remember Terry Graham saying a few years ago, well, what am I supposed to say when the developers come to me saying they want to build in Indianland? It's tough. You're trying to answer to a lot of people, but I do support the moratorium. Thank you.
Larry Bennett.
Hello, Larry Bennett, 6495 Ancient Way in Indianland. And the reason I'm here tonight is that repeated concerns have been brought up about a commercial development at intersection 160 and Barbleville Road. So there are concerns that have turned into UDO violations, but it seems like, just me out here, you know, looking at, it seems like that there are certain ordinances that the county finds may be important and certain that they don't because they have not been enforced. So all kinds of things that have been expressed to the council about tree canopy, about setbacks and so forth. So I really just am here imploring you to enforce the UDO that's in place as the folks are, you know, in the process of building. So thanks for your time.
Janine Clifton.
Hi, Janine Clifton, 2023 Oliver Terrace, Indianland, South Carolina. I'm here about Barbleville and Fort Mill Highway again. I'm back, and thank you to my neighbor who came before me. This seems to be a never-ending saga. I told you last time this was a Trojan horse, and frankly, it just keeps getting worse every day. And imagine my added frustration to see the property tax increase on my home because I was reassessed and to see the new sign outside because, hey, we want to widen roads. I mean, come on, these guys came, they're trying to build next to us, they're not following the UDO, and obviously, they're not contributing to the new road at the corner. I'm going to take a wild guess. The developer reposted their plans, nothing's changed. We know there was a conclusion that Melanie Lane is a private driveway. I'm still shaking my head on this one because that lane is connecting two lots to Barbleville, so it must be a street because those two lots have no other access to Barbleville. They don't have any other access to Fort Mill Highway. So either they're in total violation of the UDO, or that's really a street. Because my Amazon came up the other day, and guess what? Melanie Lane's a delivery address on my Amazon account. So the UDO basically forbids direct driveway access to thoroughfares like Barbleville, and like I told you, two parcels do not front a street. Two parcels now are on this driveway. So I suspect Melanie Lane is really a private street, no different than my neighborhood's private streets, and at the least, they look like they're putting four buildings on this street or drive. They also cannot do multiple business types on the same parcel. We kind of looked that up on the UDO. But according to their advertisement, the Montessori school has 4,700 square feet of retail space available. So that one building is going to have a Montessori school and free retail space for rent at it. And that's directly a buddy and a neighbor. It's sitting right next to her property lawn. They're not obeying the UDO and the setback rules. Is this really still a major subdivision and it's disguised right now as a minor? So I really would love for you to really stop and look at this. I know we have a lot going on in this county, but my property value is changing by the day. We have neighbors who have pulled their homes off the market because they won't sell because of the noise with this. I need your help. When are we going to deal with this mess? We need your help with the process. We need to quit enabling bad development, and we need to enforce the UDO, just like others have been saying. Honestly, the insanity's got to stop, and like I told you, I'll keep coming until we get resolution. So thank you.
Thank you. Janesa Sopatino.
I'm also here to discuss the concerns of overlooked at Barbara Rock residence regarding the commercial development on the corner of Highway 160 and Barbleville Road. Since I was last here, the land has continued to be cleared and developed. The trees are completely gone, except for one lone tree that they have left along our neighborhood on a hill that is dying because they disrupted all of the soil around the tree, and when it falls, it will be on one of our houses. So everyone needs to be clear that when that happens, because it's not if, it is hurricane season, if we have one storm come through, that tree's already leaning and it will crash into one of our homes. That tree is on the developer's land. Our neighborhood now has a direct view of Barbleville Road, Lancaster Highway, and a massive 5G tower because all those trees have been taken down. It also, as my neighbor mentioned, it has come to our attention that the county is taking the position that Melanie Road is a private right of way or driveway. Melanie Road is the road that connects to Barbleville Road and runs through all eight parcels of the so-called minor subdivisions being developed. You all have a map that I printed. I pulled that from Moody's website today. So that is their plan as of today. They're lying to you all. It is a major subdivision. If Melanie Road is defined as a driveway by the county, South Carolina Code of Law, Section 565450 defines a driveway as "every way or place of private ownership and used for vehicular travel by the owner and those having expressed or implied permission from the owner." This means Parcell 7 and 8 on the land do not front a street. They are illegal lots, and they shall never be developed because they are landlocked. Also, per criteria in UDO, Section 1.4.3B.2A, Parcell 7 and 8 do not front a drive in a public parking area, and none of the parking for the sites are or will be public. What makes this more interesting is the eight parcels of land that I've given you all on that piece of paper. They clearly have it labeled as a road. This requires major subdivision process based on UDO, Section 10. They have circumvented all of this, again, by lying to the county that it's a minor subdivision. The developers also advertising retail, office, and medical out parcels on the land and putting in commercial retailers on a private driveway. So it is a private driveway, or is it a road? If I haven't confused you all, this is what we are dealing with for the last 12 months. So it's, they're just giving us a complete runaround. We need help by the county. We're spending a lot of time looking into all of this, coming down here. We're desperate at this point. I also don't see anywhere on the drawings for a Type C buffer, which is required for major subdivision. A Type C buffer is required where parking areas, dumpsters, loading docks, or other utility structures are visible from adjacent lots. All of that right now is going to be completely visible 100% from our neighborhood. I also just want to note real quick, I have an open FOIA request with Lancaster County for all communication between the developers and owners of the land and all Lancaster County employees. I submitted this on August 24th. We are now 30 days since I paid the deposit on September 15th. Over 28 days since I paid the deposit. You have 30 days to give me my documents, or I will be contacting South Carolina Attorney General on Thursday. So, thank you.
And Janesa Sopatino. Okay, thank you. All right, that ends our citizens' comments. We're going to go now to special presentations, Item A, Women's and Rich.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. We have several electronic comments. So, Mr. Chairman and councilmembers, we had 37 electronic citizens' comments. You have physical copies at your seats. We had several people write in to support the Indianland Residential Development Moratorium, so I'm just going to read their names because basically they're just in support of this. For independent particulars, you can reference the comment that I have put at your seat. Mary Dubeski, Gina Bobo, Douglas Brant, Joan Zimmer, Donna Morosco, Terri Stobling, Tim Grimes, Marcia and Christopher Kennard, Melissa Jockers, Carol Schmidt, Roxanne, Karen Partapillo, Mary Jo Reenie, Fred Davison, Carolyn Hardisty, Paula Cannington, Rena Lavingard, Diane DeSenna, Lucinda Gord and Gerald Gord, Marion Dunn, Jean Cassetta, Kristen Hanley, Paula Cannington, Jim Maciver. Cannington, Jim Maciver, and Leroy Rosenberg. And I apologize if I messed up anybody's name. The other citizens' comments were from Mary Ann Bingham, no address given. She wrote in regarding building without consideration of traffic is irresponsible. Sue, no last name given, no address given regarding the fact that roads are too crowded in Lancaster. Gloria Walt Hahn, no address given that they have reached the limit for homes in our area and that council should discontinue further growth. Dana Nickerson, no address given, wanting to join the petition for the moratorium on the Indianland Residential Development Moratorium. Susan Thomas, Lancaster, South Carolina, that she doesn't support any more development in Indianland without planning for utilities, roads, support facilities, and schools. Lori Johnson from Lancaster County that she does not want the county to give discounts or reductions on new construction fees. Warren Cottingham, Indianland, South Carolina, that he supports the moratorium and to stop any more shopping centers within 10 miles of Highway 521. Ray Roberts, no address given, supports a three-year moratorium. Jared Calhoun, no address given regarding the overlook and Barbleville Road, submitted four pictures where a giant tree was near a home left on a hill while the surrounding terrain was removed. He notes that if the tree falls, it would compromise the retaining wall. I did attach to his comments those four pictures. Rhonda Beagle supports the moratorium and the transportation tax. She writes that taxpayers should not have to fund an additional sales tax to widen Highway 521. Caitlin Batten, no address given regarding the project at the corner of 160 and Barbleville Road, that there are no barriers and the developer won't answer questions, and there are safety issues for residents at the overlook, so they're asking for the county to look at the project and to protect the residents. And then lastly, John Saul from Indianland, South Carolina, regarding Lancaster County being in violation of South Carolina state law pertaining to the size of voting precincts. He states that South Carolina Code of Law's Title VII, Article III, Section 77710 states that no precinct shall have more than 1,500 qualified electors, and he states that Lancaster County should have a minimum of 46 precincts. That's all. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Simpson. Okay, now we'll go to Item 7A, Special Presentation, Women's Enrichment Center Program Overview. Ms. Julie Walters, Executive Director of the Women's Enrichment Center.
Good evening. Thank you so much. I'm Julie Walters, 1915 Territorial Trail, Lancaster, South Carolina, and I'm representing the Women's Enrichment Center. I wanted to tell you about a short project that I'd been working on for about 16 months, and what it comes down to is who you know and who you get connected to in life. Reached out to Amazon, and Amazon finally gave me a response. They have partnered with the Women's Enrichment Center, but I do need the county's help. And let me tell you briefly about this. For everything that is returned to Amazon, Amazon has decided to give it to their nonprofit of choice. Lancaster County's Women's Enrichment Center was selected as that charity of choice. The great thing about this is we're going to be not only giving to the Women's Enrichment Center, we're going to be giving to a lot of nonprofits. I'm going to go ahead and tell you, tomorrow morning, I will be up at 7:00 heading to Amazon in Charlotte. Charlotte has 10 different locations. We're going to be picking up a pallet load, that's 28 packages of dog food and cat food. All of that will go to our animal rescue shelters. That should help you with your budget. That is a continuation. We can come two to three times a week. I can get 20 pallets every time I go. We are partnering with Hells Go Mine. We're going to get veterans involved. Veterans are always looking for something to do. I'm going to tell you about a project later on that I'll come back to present to county, and that's a new nonprofit. It's called Finding Serenity. It's a community campus, and it's going to involve not just one part of the county, but all of the county. Briefly, the people that we're serving right now will be veterans, CARE in Kershaw, Council on Aging, Meals on Wheels, Brooklyn Springs Schools, Andrew Jackson Special Needs Department, Community Powerhouse, Hope on the Hill, Lancaster County Alamo Shelter, Bel Air United Methodist Food Pantry, Buford High School Special Needs Department, and the Soup Kitchen on the corner of Gay and Ferguson. The Road and Bridge Crew of Lancaster County and USC Lancaster. Now, where I'm going to need your help is this. If we don't pick up those items quickly, we could lose out on this opportunity, and those donations can go to another county. That means York or Chester or another county can get all of this. This is not costing us one dime. This is just picking up things and breaking them down, and we've asked the nonprofits that we've partnered with to give us a volunteer, and if you're going to be receiving, the least you can do is help us break down, and you take the items you need. What I am needing is, this is temporarily, and I'm probably about a year at the most. We're going to need a place that we can actually house the items temporarily. One of the places that I have looked around and I have talked to our administrator, Mr. Marcel, and he has been excellent to work with, you need to know that. One of the things that we talked about was requesting the old Carolina Pharmacy location at Barnett Complex off Meeting Street. The items that we're receiving are human food, pet food, toys, baby products, hygiene items, cleaning supplies, school supplies, snacks, drinks, juices, Ensure, cooking products, automotive supplies. You know, if you tell me that your automotive department needs something, well, by George, we're going to send it to you. We're already sending it to the school districts to their automotive departments. We even sent a bunch of supplies to the cosmetology schools to help them out. Again, this is all free, but if I don't have some help, I'm not going to be able to be able to take all this stuff on. You know, it's amazing, we were able to get gloves, hats, and scarves. We gave out almost 500 of those items last week. And the great thing is Lancaster County, Jeff Cato's department benefited from that because they're able to use those items when they're outside, and all of this is free. So anything that is basically non-perishable and it's returned to Amazon, now it becomes to the Women's Enrichment Center, and we share it. So if you could please sit in your heart to help us so we can help others. I know that we're only on Level 1. Level 2 with Amazon means it will be bigger items. It will be refrigerators. It will be any kind of items that are the bigger ticket items. But for right now, I'm just asking for assistance to give us a place where we can go temporarily, at least for a year. Thank you for your consideration and your time.
Thank you. Are there any questions from Ms. Walters?
Do you have any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on to Item A, the Consent Agenda. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve Consent Agenda Items 8A, 8B, and 8C.
I have a motion for Mr. Marcel. Do we have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Ms. McGriff. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. It's unanimous. And now we go to Item 9, what was 9A, is moved down now, but we'll still call it 9A. Public Hearing and Second Reading of Ordinance Number 2025-1982. Ordinance Title and Ordinance to amend Ordinance 2015-1346 related to a development agreement between Lancaster County and UHF Development Group LLC, also known as PDD 26 Collins Road Site, to realign density and lot lines.
No, no, no.
No. We moved G to A.
Oh, I'm sorry. We did that. Okay, let's start over again. G, Public Hearing and First Reading of Ordinance 2025-1992. Ordinance Title and Ordinance to impose a nine-month moratorium on acceptance of, review of, and/or action upon applications for zoning approvals, residential development and construction permits, site plan approvals, and any other official county action that would authorize or permit the development and construction of new single-family residential subdivisions or new multifamily residential developments pending. The consideration of amendments to the County Unified Development Ordinance invoking the Pending Ordinance Doctrine, protecting existing vested rights as required by applicable law, and to provide for other matters related thereto. Ms. Harden. First, though, we have to have a public hearing. Hold on one second. Okay, we have arrived at the place on the agenda for public hearings. Public hearings provide an opportunity for the public to express to council their views on the matter that is the subject of the public hearing. Each public hearing will be conducted in accordance with the requirements of state and local law. Please keep in mind that a public hearing is not a forum for the public to engage in a discussion or dialogue with council as a whole. Each person will be given three minutes to make their comments. Please speak into the microphone. Before you begin your comments, please state your name and address for the record. Your three minutes will start when you have provided your name and address. First is Alan Spar. Okay, thank you. David Bosry.
Thank you. I'm David Bosry, 4099 Persimmon Road in River Chase. I'm here as a private citizen. I'm also here as the Board Chair of the Van Wyck Fire District Fee Board, so I'm kind of wearing two hats on this. First of all, I'd like to express my wholehearted support for the ordinance doing a moratorium. It is very clear that those members of the public that care to provide input to the council overwhelmingly also support it, as do I. It's simply out of control in the panhandle, and I think the council is doing the right thing by trying to rewrite and amend and update the UDO. You got to finish that job. There's just too much going on in the meantime. As citizens, we can't even keep up with showing up to planning committee meetings to try and keep track of all the new developments that are going on. In terms of the fire, there's been a lot of expression about infrastructure in general and traffic, but in my particular case, the issue of fire infrastructure, the county is now well behind the eight ball in terms of updating the infrastructure and needed equipment and so on for the fire departments. There's a great deal of discussion, needed discussion, going on about how the fire departments are going to be funded and equipped and so on. Again, you got to solve this problem before you move on with development after development after development. So it's simply, there are just too many open questions, and these things need to get settled and discussed, and rational solutions develop before we continue willy-nilly down the road of developments, Oliver. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Gwen Hill.
My name is Gwen Hill. I live at 155 Sweet Briar Drive in Indianland, and I'm here to add regarding your add-on to the standard road requirements in the UDO and road impact fees. I too, like the lady from, husband from Sun City was in real estate. I was in real estate for quite a while, and one thing, I'd never heard of places that didn't have impact fees for developers. But I know that happens, that, you know, but the thing is, is that I support the nine-month moratorium on new residential development application to address first responders' operational issues and to update impact fees for these essential health and safety reasons. I understand, and, you know, I know I was going to do this. I attended the 1% transportation program that was given at the Dale Webb Library, and you did a real good job, and I understand a lot more now. And the proposed ordinance does not include adding impact fees for roads, nor does it include making more mandatory requirements for road and drainage improvements in the uniform development ordinance. I have watched planning, the commission, and county council meetings on videos where developers are required to put in few or no road improvements, like right turn lanes or left turn lanes, wider residential roads, and so forth. Developers are also not required to contribute impact fees for approved road projects. When asked, the developer just says it wasn't in the UDO. The cost to make these road improvements are eventually going to be passed on to taxpayers in the form of higher property taxes. And being that, right now, I did a little research on it, because I was trying to figure out, are all these developments getting put on the board? And I just want to know, in 10 years, when you say this is a 10-year tax, what are the ramifications? Well, first of all, I discovered when I read some things from the Herald and Queen City News that right now, the council has approved 7,500 lots in Indianland. It has approved 3,500 homes yet to be built in the panhandle. It has approved 21, over 2,100 apartments yet to be built in the panhandle. And in Edgewater, the big new subdivision that's going to be really pretty, you have approved 15,000 lots, and they are already building down there. I went to a party down there and was just surprised when I got there. Didn't know it existed. So, and it actually has 16,000 lots, but you approved 15,000 lots, and because you approved them back in 1999. So I guess they just dragged that 1999 plan out and said, prove it now. And I also understand that all of these people who have given these lots approved, they are under the guise of not having to pay impact fees for the next 10 years. If you got a plan, you don't have to, and we'll say it's in the 10-year window, you don't have to pay anything. No wonder Lennar and all the big builders are coming down, because they, instead of running somewhere else where they might have to address schools, roads, and improvements that have to be done, or you're going to have a real mess. And, you know, I appreciate this time. I got a little way away from my thing, but also, I understand 521 is only going to be improved down to Costco. Costco want to bring the, you know, North Carolina Valentine down to Costco, and we're not going to get in widening past Costco or anything else. Now, that might be, you might not, you know, well, time is out, but you might want to correct that if that's not true, okay? Thank you very much, and I appreciate you all's hard work, and maybe a consultant from a similar-sized city or county that could come in and to help you figure this out, because it's a lot. I know it's a lot for you all. Thanks a lot.
Just as information, 521 is presented on the penny sales tax to go to Highway 75, which is down past Walnut Creek. Mary Antranet McGammon. Okay. Paul Coburg. Okay. Patty Benz.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Patty Benz. I live at 48416 Snapdragon Lane in Indianland, and I'd like to speak to you about the impact of development on Lancaster schools, and also to let you know that I support the nine-month moratorium on new residential development applications in Districts 1, 4, and 7, for the county to address first responder operational issues and to update impact fees for these essential health and public safety services in schools. I currently believe that the school impact fees are only assessed in the panhandle. They are woefully low and do not. They are woefully low and do not address the needs of the new school, of the school district to help expand classrooms on existing campuses or build new schools. In addition, the current information presented about school enrollment numbers in both Planning Commission and County Council reports needs to be updated. Current information is from a projected report, enrollment report dated 12/22 that was prepared by a consulting firm for the school district. There have been thousands more residential unit applications submitted and approved by Lancaster County and the City of Lancaster after the projected school enrollment numbers report date. As such, I recommend that the school enrollment data used in the Planning Commission and Council reports be obtained from either of two sources. One, contact Lancaster School District for actual enrollment numbers in August, January, and June. And two, the South Carolina State Department of Education Active Student Headcount Link, which you will receive, provides enrollment 45 days after school begins, then 135 days and 180 days. Click on the larger of the files for School District Headcount by grade and scroll to Lancaster County where all the schools are listed. I hope this helps you, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Barbara Scannell.
My name is Barbara Scannell. I live at 8016 Carolina Lakesway in Indianland, the Sun City Development. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and council members. I support the nine-month moratorium on new residential developments. However, development applications are coming in throughout Lancaster County, especially in District 2, including the City of Lancaster, and District 5. Though I live in Sun City, I am concerned about the impacts of new development on first responder services throughout the entire county. I'll share some information about myself and my professional background. I worked for three cities for over 20 years. My primary duties were included development and management of first responder field communication sites and systems, 911 communication center systems, voice and data systems used by responder, first responders in the field. I served on technical review committees, similar to what we have here, all through the 20 years, in which I reviewed hundreds of new development applications. I assessed the impact of the proposed development on communication systems and field operation capabilities, and asked for mitigation requirements to be assessed on proposed developments to maintain required service levels. The current Lancaster County Technical Review TRC process and new development reports presented by the Planning Commission and County Council do provide information on the nearest EMS and fire stations, but not the impacts on first responder operations. I'm therefore recommending that, I appreciate everything the planning department does, but I'm recommending some possible updates to how the technical review committee operates based on the experiences I've had, to include the following. One, identify the impacts of all new development applications on first responder health and public safety operations, including the coroner, EMS, emergency management, public safety communications, and the sheriff department. That includes the number of units already approved but not yet construct, under construction, the number of units approved and under construction, and the number of units proposed in the specific development applications and other developments also going through the planning process right now. Because what's happening, you're always playing catch-up, you can never get caught up unless they look at the big picture and say, what's going to happen? And then you have a better planning and knowing what's going on for, when you look at budgets long-term. And you also have to review existing first responder department resources, including facilities, staffing, vehicles, and other needed equipment. So the questions we have to ask is, does each first responder department have the resources to provide the required health and public safety services for the additional residential units proposed in the development application? And if not, what mitigation measures are needed to approve? So you have to look at the additional first responder department resources that will be needed to provide the service to each new proposed development and other developments in the review process, and that includes, again, the facilities, the staffing, the vehicles, and other needed equipment. So I'm doing this out of respect, and I thank all the planning department does and all what you do in the Planning Commission. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Alex Newsom. Jennifer Sabatino.
My name is Jennifer Sabatino. I'm a resident of River Chase Estates, 6072 Chimney Bluff Road. I'm speaking on behalf of myself only, and good evening to all. I am here to support the much-needed ordinance moratorium for nine months and hopefully an extension to 12 months for further, to further applications for larger developments in question this evening in the areas where pressure on roads and emergency services are greatly affected. As a medical professional before you many times, public safety needs to be at the forefront. I'm a nurse practitioner, and I've worked in the field for over 20 years in trauma medicine, and it's very, very hard to not have your resources. It's very difficult, especially when you're taking care of people. We need to gravely improve fire service coverage, reduce response times, evaluate the volunteer/paid model, volunteer pool will start to phase out, and we need more competitive pay lines, and also to keep our, to keep our people where they are, retention is very important. We need to make sure that emergency and fire responses have the equipment to do their jobs efficiently and safely. Overall, an emergency response plan needs to be at the forefront. Personally, as a resident of River Chase Estates, I also would like to know where our Riverside Fire Station is at. I know we have multiple correspondences on that. We're a developer who was very willingly, two years ago, a year ago, here at planning meetings and council meetings, and recently during the summer, ready to donate the land and the monies that are in the reserve to at least start the planning process. We understand that it takes time to build something, but at least to get that planning going. Also, in favor of this moratorium, how much time do I have? Good. In favor of this moratorium to really take a closer look at the new 2025 UDO's review for 2026. We need better protection for the consumer when it comes to developers and language spelled out where there are minimal gray areas. Definitions and exceptions where safety and welfare are in question are much needed. We need to modernize and optimize these standards in place, better processes, and accountability and quality assurance is so important. We all think that developers and builders are doing the right thing, but they're just not. And we really need to really look at some processes to look really deeply into accountability. And also, hopefully, one day, we can get these UDOs really optimal where we don't really need these development agreements anymore. For River Chase Estates, where I live, it didn't work, it's not working in our favor for me. I'm part of a 20-year agreement that is going to get extended further out to complete the project, which we want it completed. However, we're in the dark, you know, with a developer. We don't get communication. Our, our management companies only pay for a certain amount of time to manage, and we don't know really what's going on. And to live in the dark for 20 years and plus another possible eight, seven, nine more years is hard. You know, we don't even know what's, you know, what's going on with our budgets most of the time, and we're also paying into our capital contributions. So, as far as these UDOs, I really would love to see something where there's some requirement for developers to speak to their community at least twice a year. And I also, just before I go, I know I have three seconds left, I'd also want to commend my councilman, District 1, Sir Graham, for his wonderful, wonderful newsletters that really gets a lot of important information across. Thank you for all your time. I know this is very hard and difficult, but hopefully we can have some movement forward. Thank you.
That concludes our public hearing. I'll entertain a motion to approve first reading of ordinance 2025-1992. Have a motion from Ms. McGriff. Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Any discussion? Allison, do you have anything to contribute to?
We have a presentation to, there's a couple of questions we do need council to give some clarity on, but Ms. Harden does have an overview so people can know some of the things that are in the moratorium and understand what may not be in the moratorium. So I'll turn it over to Ms. Harden, our Development Services Director.
Thank you. And if at any time you'd rather just skip to the vote, just let me know. So some of the questions we have received as part of the staff fielding calls, I anticipated some of them, and I've added some of the others that have actually come through the phone to help answer what a moratorium is, being the pause on processing permits and applications that would lead to new residential subdivisions or residential multifamily developments. How long is the pause? As it's been said many times, nine months is proposed option to extend to 90 days. And what is the goal to allow time for the proposed unified, unified development ordinance to be edited, reviewed, and finalized? We have been in the process of doing the UDO rewrite since 2021, where it started with an assessment by our contractors, and we are in the home stretch. Where is the moratorium located? The map was included in the legal ad that went into the newspaper. It's also attached to the ordinance. And you are also provided a turn-by-turn with maps on where the lines were drawn, or where the lines will be drawn. If anybody else wants that, that's available as well. It includes all the unincorporated properties in the area known as the Panhandle, plus a stretch of rural area between Cotava River and Riverside, Old Hickory Road, south to Highway 9, Chester Highway. I would like to note also that the incorporated properties in the town of Van Wyk are not included in this. This is for unincorporated properties. So anything that's outside of the town of Van Wyk, town limits in this area. Some other questions, why only residential developments? There have been changes proposed in the UDO that are in conflict with the current UDO language on subdivisions. A pause means developments that would be created that are on the fence or getting ready to go would then have to follow the new rules. Residential developments also impact greatly with traffic and the like. Plus, you've heard from residents many times over in many meetings that they are concerned about the growth in the area and would like a pause. So this is, this is a council reacting to and responding to the input from the public. The, what constitutes a residential subdivision? There is a long, many-day thesis process available on that, that I'll be happy to talk to you for many days. But instead of that, what I'd like to say is that for this ordinance in particular, we have defined residential subdivision that would be part of the moratorium as anything over three lots. If you have a piece of property and you subdivide two additional pieces off of it, then that's the maximum that you could do in this area for this nine-month period of time, and if it's extended, for that extension. This does not apply countywide, this only applies in this area. We did not want to penalize families that want to build a house on family lots. We didn't want to stop a family from being able to cut off a piece and give it to the mother-in-law, give it to a child that wants to build their own house. That's not the intent. And that's really not the impact. We have the impact that's in the areas from the larger multi, multi-lot developments. So, in the ordinance, anything more than three lots would constitute a moratorium impact. Does this mean that no more single-family houses or no more houses can be built in this area? That is also not the intent. The way that this is written, if you have a piece of property, you can build a house on it. If you have a piece of property in an existing subdivision that has already been approved, you may build a house on it. This does not stop that. Any questions about this so far? Yes, sir?
I'll wait till the end.
Okay. When would the moratorium start? Typically, ordinances start at third reading, but this ordinance invokes what's called the pending ordinance doctrine. And in South Carolina, that means that the council, when they invoke the pending ordinance doctrine, it gives the ordinance at first reading, or whenever the pending ordinance is invoked, which is usually first reading, it gives it the effect of law. So it would be as of whenever you give the reading tonight, going forward, if you invoke that. It is written with that involved in the ordinance. If you wanted not to use that, you'd have to remove that from the ordinance. The applications are impacted. I want to commend the planning and zoning staff, the building staff, and the stormwater staff. They all went through all of their applications together to work up which ones would be the most heavily or the most direct impacted by this. So in this particular buffer area, the impacts would be to civil site construction plans for new residential subdivisions and/or residential multifamily development, commercial permits for multifamily residential only, not for businesses, not for stores, not for churches, not for institutional, not for schools, but for the commercial permits for multifamily residential. Major subdivision preliminary plans and master developments, which are mixed use. New road names in relationship to proposed subdivisions would also be on hold. And then zoning verification letters. If you are asking for a zoning verification letter to confirm that you can get 600 or so units out of your, you know, many hundreds of acres, we're not going to provide that until afterwards, because everything will be on hold. There is, we do not expect impact to multifamily residential developments that are currently in process. Some examples are Walnut Creek neighborhood, they're currently in process of building homes, they should not be impacted by this, the way that it's written. Any single-family residential permit, as I said before, if you want, if you've got a piece of land and you want to put up a house, this should not impact that. Any commercial processes not, not related to multifamily developments, and any new residential subdivision review outside of the identified area. If you have land in Kershaw and you want to put 300 homes on it, we will listen, we'll take the application, we'll take it to Planning Commission, and we'll review and provide that information to Planning Commission. So, not that say we're going to automatically say yes, we will give it the full, fair review. Some other discussion has been around, well, what are the names of the neighborhoods that would be exempted? So, again, I worked with the different development services staff members to come up with the best list that we could come up with, based on what has already been through, what I call the hopper, what's been through the process and has a, what would be considered a vested right. State law in South Carolina says that if you have a right to build, that right continues until certain things happen. So these are, these are agents, or, excuse me, developments that have been reviewed and approved at some point in the past with the community, both multifamily and town homes. And in case people didn't know what the difference was, I went ahead and defined multifamily and town homes on the slide, with multifamily being, people think about it as apartments. And town homes are basically single-family homes that share a wall. They have their own lot line, which is different than an apartment. When you get, when you rent an apartment, you're buying, you're not buying, you're renting a space inside a building, but that building is all on one piece of property. If you're getting a town home, the town home property line is your wall-to-wall, some of the front and some of the back. So that's why that's a little bit different. They are reviewed differently. One requires a subdivision, one does not. And at the bottom of each one of these, I'd like to also give a great thank you to my staff, who said, "You need to put at the bottom, please be aware that this may not be a complete list of all projects in the moratorium area that are exempt. Please consult with staff concerning any questions or uncertainties." I'd like that disclaimer to go forward on the next two slides, please, as well. Some single-family residential developments that we have reviewed and have been approved since 2020, so in the last five years, the list on the IDAs. These are ones that are either in process of being reviewed, or ones that have been approved but are not finalized out. Not all the houses are built in them. Or maybe they are, but they're just a little bit, maybe there's a little bit left to go. But these are the ones that, according to our records, have been through the Planning Commission since 2020. Those would be allowed to continue to move forward with any project, any, any building in that area. And then the rest of the other existing single-family residential developments in the moratorium area, I took a run at all the neighborhoods in the Panhandle and in the area that was identified, addition to the Panhandle. And these are existing neighborhoods. If you have a house in this neighborhood, more than likely, you're not impacted by this, if you want to build a house in this neighborhood. Again, check with staff before moving forward. Some examples of how the moratorium would be applied, we brainstormed these, the application to build a new house on a vacant lot in Sugar Creek subdivision. Well, Sugar Creek has been approved as a major subdivision. They have a lot of lots that they're building on now, but they haven't built on all of them. If someone buys one of those lots, the building can continue on that. If you have an application to rezone 600 acres from rural residential to medium-density residential to develop a cluster subdivision, which also would require a development agreement, at this point, if we receive that tomorrow, if you, if you pass this moratorium today, if we... were to receive a request like that tomorrow, we would say no. We would say you'd have to wait until the nine-month moratorium has passed. But if you have an application to subdivide one lot into three in order to build three houses on your family land, that would be allowed in this area. Anything more than that would fall under the blockage from the moratorium. And I'm available for any questions.
Any questions from Ms. Harden?
Yes. So, thank you for that. That was very helpful. What do you mean by underway?
So underway means that there has been an application that has been received by the county and there is a review process that has started for that. If I received a subdivision application today for 20 lots of 40 acres, that person has paid their fee and the application is in the system and the review starts. At that point, we have what I think, and I'll defer to Mr. Merck to point for anything further than this, is we have a responsibility to act on that. They've paid their fee, they've put in their application, the data has been received. I'm open to other discussion if you have any other differences.
Yeah, I would like some more feedback on that, especially along the lines of if it is submitted but not approved. Because it's, I guess, part of the question is, are sites that are underway, do those have vested rights?
That's one of the questions we talked about. The UDO lays out the vested rights. And it depends on how much is approved. Is it sites of specific approval? Is it phased development? You have to look at all of that because it's two years per that. And then the Planning Commission can come up and give five annual extensions of that. So those things are sitting out there that you could have some vested rights. We also brought up some questions about resubmittals, people that submit things and then may pull it. And in my opinion, technically, if you pull it, it's over. If you start over again, it's a new application. We had that discussion. I think there was some discussion, correct me if I'm wrong, the TIA's and so forth as well. And I think that was more a staff-level question. So it boils down to, and for me, as an attorney, I think I look at it as, if it's something new coming through the door, then it's, you know, if it has not started, for me, and I don't do the day-to-day with them, obviously, if they haven't given it preliminary plat approval and moving through, then to me, it's not approved. Now, I don't know exactly how Development Services handled this, but, and I hate to say this, but I disagree a little bit with Ms. Harden that if it's just come in the door and we haven't done anything with it, if they've just paid their money and so forth, we haven't approved anything. We haven't moved anything forward in the process. So as a lawyer, I think I would argue that if something has been approved and we have started the process, then it's actually, it's moving through. If it's just been filed, then it hasn't been approved, there's no approval been given to it. So therefore, it's dead in the water. It stops at this point.
They can get a refund of their funds.
Absolutely, yes, yes.
And that's kind of where I was going because I think, I think having the list of all the sites is really confusing because some of them are completed developments already.
Right.
So it just adds to that. The reason why I'm wondering is because we have, in the ordinance, a definition for new that identifies it as vested rights. Then we go with the effect of vested rights. So I'm not sure why we have Section 8 that has all the pending matters that seems to kind of upend everything that we're talking about with vested rights.
To add to Jose's question, we need a definite answer to that question because if we're going to pass this tonight, it doesn't need to be a maybe's. Who do we go to for the definite answers? Do we go to...
I agree with that.
Yeah, we need definite answers.
Doesn't need to be a gray area.
You're right, absolutely. From a staff standpoint, when we get an application in, we have a directive to move forward until we're told otherwise. If the council would like to say tonight, we do not want to move forward with things that don't already have approval from the Planning Commission, then I would like to have some input on where the cutoff would be. If the Planning Commission has given approval to a subdivision to move forward, that is preliminary plat approval. That is a vested right that's recognized in the UDO. They have a plat. If they are in the process, we have some that are pending review by the Planning Commission next month and this month. I definitely would like to have input from the council on whether those should go forward or we should approach them and say, "I'm sorry, you're going to have to wait."
I would think they have to wait.
Yeah.
That would definitely be a...
When we make this decision, do we need to put that in the form of a motion or amendment to that?
Yes, ma'am, because the pending ordinance doctrine is going into effect with this, you'd want to have everything defined clearly tonight. And I think Councilmember Louise, perhaps in Section 8 is where we can make that clarification.
That's exactly where I think it needs to happen, where we just clarify that there really are no pending matters. It's really based on, if it has vested rights, then it moves forward. If it doesn't, it doesn't. So Section 8, I think, is irrelevant. And then we can take out the exhibits and everything else because it's already defined as a vested right within the UDO.
All right. So...
It will not be up for discussion. It will be a definite.
It's defined in the UDO.
I would like clarification on one point. Are there any pending developments that have sent in their plat and been through the Technical Review Committee and been turned down for...
Well, if it's a plat for subdivision, when you get a turn down from the TRC, that doesn't prevent you from going on to Planning Commission. The comments follow through from Planning Commission, or from staff to Planning Commission and become part of the discussion. Ms. Williams, are you aware of any time that we have had an applicant get a negative review from TRC and they did not go forward to Planning Commission that wasn't their choice? Okay. So the ones that we have that have not gone forward after a negative review is their choice to not go forward. It has the right to go forward.
Okay, so there's none that we will have any issue with?
No, we have some in the hopper now, in the process now, that are waiting on reviews from the Planning Commission that have received TRC review.
But they don't have vested rights?
They have not been approved by the Planning Commission. Approval by the Planning Commission gives you the vested rights per the state law.
Correct.
An application in the door is what the staff has at the UDO and the staff level of action.
So I think the definition of the vested rights is where it locks it in because it's already a defined term in the UDO.
So if you go with vested rights, that means that everything that is pending on the Planning Commission's agenda in this area for the rest of the year is removed from the agendas. Okay. And we should issue refunds? Okay.
So Councilmember Louise, if I can clarify, are you going to be looking to make an amendment to remove Section 8 in its entirety from this document? Will that clear up what you think?
That, I think, would get us. And then we don't have a reference to any further exemptions as an exhibit, right?
Not that I'm aware of because above that is your effect on vested rights, so that'll handle that.
Correct.
And I don't think there's anything else. No, that was the only one, the effect on pending matters.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, that's where we got the information about anything that is previously submitted prior to the introduction of the ordinance.
I would make a motion to amend the ordinance to remove Section 8 and identify it as intentionally deleted.
Mr. Motion?
That is my motion.
Second?
Yes, I just made that motion.
Second?
We have an amendment from Mr. Louise and a second from Mr. Graham. Have any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, it's unanimous.
So to be clear, that takes out anything that is pending with the Planning Commission for a subdivision and you mean that to also be for any pending...
Anything that does not have a vested right.
Anything that doesn't have a vested right. Thank you.
We go back to the main motion. Any discussion?
I do want to have a comment. I want to thank all the people that spoke tonight, that sent in comments, all the people spoke to in the community, grocery store, football game, schools, all that stuff. But I do want to say it like this, this is not the solution. This is a pause. This allows the county to get it right. The county and we as council have a lot of work to do related to UDO, fire, infrastructure. Nine to 12 months might sound like a long time, but it's not a long time to do this. So obviously, I clearly support the nine-month moratorium and for all the reasons that people have talked about tonight.
I've got a, I guess, a comment toward our legal person. Now, we've got nine months and 90-day extension. Explain that process and after that, what are our options?
So by law, you should not go beyond 12 months for a moratorium. So right now, you're issuing nine months with the ability to extend it for three more to get to that 12. So when you come to the end of the nine months, you need to go through the process again to extend it for another three months. But state law and case law shies away from doing anything to impact someone's rights on their property beyond a year.
So we can do nine months, 90-day extension, and an additional 30 days?
You could.
Okay. Just want to make sure everybody understands that.
And the ordinance lays out what is required for asking for that extension.
Any other comments? Not, we'll move back to the main motion is amended. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, it's unanimous. Thank you, Ms. Harden.
Mr. Chairman, for the record, the pending ordinance doctrine was included, so this is effective as of now.
All right, we're going to go back to item 9A and begin. We'll start with a public hearing. We do have one person signed up for the public hearing. Alana Kiwitt. We'll allow a minute or two for the room to clear. Thank you. Does anybody need a break for a few minutes?
Yeah.
All right, we're going to take about a five-minute break while the room's clearing out. Is the mic on? There we go. We're going to come back to order now. We're going to start with item 9A. Again, public hearing and second reading of ordinance 2025-1982. I think I read through all this before I figured out I was on the wrong one. So we're going to have a public hearing. Elena Kewitt. So I called her up for public hearing. She's in part of public hearing.
Okay, good evening. My name's Elena Kewitt, 6,000 Fairview Road, Charlotte, North Carolina, and I'm authorized to speak on behalf of UHF Development. Hopefully, everybody is excited about some commercial development, so after the residential moratorium. So this is our second reading since the first reading. You know, I think we have a couple of requests. The first request is the realignment of the portion of the boundary. There seem to be no questions regarding that bullet point. The second request is relating to the parking ratio. Last hearing, there was a discrepancy between staff's recommendation and our preferred parking ratio for Flex product. Since then, we have agreed to staff's recommendation of one parking space per 450 square feet of building area, and that is specific to Flex product. For all other product, it will go back to the 1998 UDO, which is the UDO that is associated with this planned development district. Also, since the first reading, we have worked with staff and Councilmember Louise coming up with a comprehensive list of permitted uses for the site. So it really takes an attorney to be able to comprehend the PDD, the ordinance, the UDO. And so for clarity to staff, for clarity to my leasing agents, we wanted to create one comprehensive list of all permitted uses in our villages, Villages F and Villages H. And I will let Ms. Williams speak of where we ended up with the list of permitted uses. I'm happy to answer any questions if you do have any questions on any of them. The next request is, you know, as mentioned before, time flies, and we've already been working on this for a year. And originally, the development agreement expiration date was very far in the future. And now, somehow, it's time's flown by a year, and the development agreement expires at the end of next year. And we're going to move as quickly as we can to get these plans approved. But just to allow some buffer, since we're here now, I would request a small extension to the development agreement. And that's all from me. We are very excited to bring Flex Development to Lancaster County, where there is a significant lack of supply of Flex product. We have been working with Brian Folk on where to put our Flex product for a couple of years now, and this is the perfect spot where Flex office is already permitted. And so we look forward to hopefully making the project a reality. I'll be here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, do we have a motion to approve second reading of ordinance 2025-1982?
So moved.
Have a motion, second. Motion from Mr. Louise, a second from Mr. Mosdeller. Ms. Williams.
I'd like to thank Ms. Kewitt for doing most of my presentation tonight, so I can just skip over a few really good things. As she said, we started off with two requests. One request was to realign the density allowances and the lot lines between the two villages, Villages F and H. We, from the beginning, had no issues with that. We were good with that one. The second request was to adjust the parking allowance, and we have been able to agree with that one for one space per 400 square feet of gross leasable area. And then during those discussions, the use options did come up, and we discussed those between Councilwoman Louise and Attorney Merk De Pont. We were able to work together with lots of language, lots of things that did exist, lots of really cool books that I found we had from 1997. So we were able to come to a good agreement with that. However, the good agreement actually came about later this morning, well, earlier today, late morning, where we will be making a couple of amendments to the ordinance. Well, not actually to the ordinance itself, but to the list of approved uses. There were a couple of definitions and a couple of items that we were able to add on to that. I was not able to get that into your packet since that had already been produced, but I will have that before the other reading. The items are very minor in changes. There were a couple that we added some more clarification into the identifier, identifying section, so that should we decide to give up and not come back tomorrow, the people in the future would know how to have that and how it was clarified. We added a couple of sections to clarify that showrooms are included, because that is in the definition, that is in the ordinance 2015-1346. We also have added a section on light assembly, which we use the definition for light assembly, which I've learned during this process is a little bit different than light manufacturing. So that is in the addition. And then we also added in rental establishments excluding automotive rental and outdoor storage. If you have any other questions, I am here, and Ms. Kewitt is here as well to answer any of those questions.
Any questions?
So the extension of the development agreement?
That's the first I ever heard of that, so that would have to be a separate amendment.
So what would that be until?
That would be just another amendment. We could bring it as early as next council meeting.
Yeah, I'm saying that, like, what's the date that you're requesting?
Oh, no, I think six months. I think we're going to be able to get all of our approvals by the end of next year. I'm just not positive, given it's already been a year, and so I'm confident we'll be able to get it by June 30th, 2027.
What's, I'm sorry, so what is it, June 30? June 30? Okay.
I would actually recommend just doing a year so that we don't have any issues. We've run into a lot of things that have happened beyond a developer's control. It would be easier for us just to throw it out as a year if you guys are in agreeance with that.
I would agree with that, if you're in agreement with that.
And since the public hearings already happened and we didn't notice that part of it, that will be a separate one that I can prepare and bring back to you next time.
So do I need to make a motion to amend that now with the other changes, or?
I don't know if we can amend it since the public hearing already happened and it wasn't labeled. That will be a you question.
I don't really have a problem with adding to this amendment the extension of the deadline if y'all don't have a problem with that. So if you want to make that motion to add that, we can add that at the next reading.
So do I make the motion to make the changes that April was just talking about on the uses and the extension of, that's what you want me to?
I would do it all, yes.
Okay, so I will make, I make a motion to amend this ordinance so that it's consistent with the uses that have been revised by Ms. Williams, and in addition, to extend the expiration date of the development agreement until December 31st, 2027.
We have a amendment, motion from Mr. Louise. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All right, we'll go ahead and vote on the amendment. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, it's unanimous. All right, now we'll go back and vote on the original motion is amended. Is there any discussion on it? If not, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. It's unanimous. Okay, thank you very much. I'm going to move on now to item 9B, second read. Yes, sir. Okay, we're going to now go on to item 9B, second reading of ordinance 2025-1987, an ordinance titled "An Ordinance to Amend a Development Agreement with Century Community Southeast LLC in accordance with the Unified Development Ordinance, Section 9.2.18.c.c. and Section 5.02 of Ordinance 2023-1854," to expand, extend the effective date of the agreement to June 30th, 2026. This passed four to two with one extension at the September 22nd, 2025 county council meeting. Ms. Williams, do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Have a motion from Ms. McGriff and a second from Mr. Mosdeller.
Thank you again, counsel. As Mr. Johnson said during his public comment, this one is just amending the effective date to six months from the end of this year, which would be June 30th, 2026. There have been no changes to this item since the first reading. If you have any questions, both me and Mr. Johnson are here to answer those.
Do we have any discussion? I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, motion passes four to two. Please have Mr. Harper come back. Okay, we're going to go on to item 9C. We have a public hearing. We have one person registered for that public hearing, Mr. Thomas E. Philial.
I'm Thomas Philial. I reside at 2561 Pine View Drive in Lancaster. I'm a 30-plus-year resident of Pine View Drive in an area known as Kenan Heights. Honorable commissioners and staff, I appreciate the opportunity for you providing and allowing me to make this comment to this select group. My concerns are for my property, my neighborhood, and my county, and that's why I'm appealing to you with this information. Three minutes isn't enough to adequately address responsibly the issues and concerns, but here goes. We have a growth issue in this county. First, let me state, I'm not against development, but I am concerned about irresponsible development. Now to the topic regarding the specific development in mind is Arbor Meadows. This is the second time that this has come up in my third meeting on it, but the second time when it was first approved in 2021. Now, 92 homes is only a small pebble in a very big pond of Lancaster County, but it's a ripple effect of what these small developments create in opportunities and issues for our county staff and elected officials to deal with. There are 92 homes, but the main issues associated with that beyond these 92 homes are traffic and crime. Traffic being law enforcement and emergency services, being fire department, EMS, et cetera. And we've got a fine staff there. With this development, they're currently showing there's only two entrances to Arbor Meadows. This has changed from what was originally presented, to our knowledge, of three entrances and one on the backside from another street. I think it was Ross Road, perhaps. I don't recall specifically. But currently, both entrances and egresses are on Pine View Drive. That's already a very heavily traveled road. It's a 30 mile, 35 mile an hour speed limit, and most people don't even recognize that as a suggestion. I've had the traffic sign out there in my yard and seen people go by at 69 miles an hour. I've seen people go by far beyond 69 miles an hour with no sign there. I used to do some drag racing, so I can kind of have the sensation of speed there. It's a hilly road with curves, and that kind of speed makes for a deadly combination, especially with the extra traffic. You say 92 homes, well, there's probably at least two cars per home, if not more, two minimum. But beyond that, as fire services and all the other traffic is going to be associated with that. Do we have adequate sewer service? In fact, at the last council meeting when this was approved, the developer told me at that time, they thought they were going to have to redo the sewer system for that development. So who's going to pay for that? The county or the developer? Traffic is an issue, like I say, with the road, crime. With our increasing population, crime increases. We need to make sure that we, our sheriff's department, and we've got an awesome sheriff's department, we've got a forward-looking leader and a great staff that serve with him in our community. We also have good fire and EMS people, but let's not outpace our abilities with our developments. Let's keep a meekly yoke so that we can all have a pleasant community to live in. The decisions made here are decisions that people will remember, and how is it that this council would like to be remembered with the decisions they make that impact our community, not just today, but in the future? Thank you for your time and for your service.
Thank you very much. Okay, we'll move on. We're going to have first reading of ordinance 2025-1988, an ordinance titled "An Ordinance to Approve a Development Agreement with AM Group Land Holdings LLC in Connection with a Major Subdivision Preliminary Platte SD-2021-0528," which proposes a 92-lot, single-family, cluster subdivision overlay district development, establishing the regulations for the development of the property and other matters related thereto. That's Planning Commission Case Number DA-2025-1506 and DA-2021-0528. Planning Commission recommended approval of the request by a vote of five to one, and the planning staff recommended conditional approval with the provision that staff edits are included in the development agreement. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Have a motion from Ms. McGriff. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, have a motion from Ms. McGriff, a second from Mr. Harper, Ms. Williams.
Good evening. This is for a development agreement, which is not in the area that you just cut off, so we clarified that with my resident expert, Mr. D. I would like to say that you have, in other development agreements, created ad hoc committees, and those other four options that are in the UDO still apply to this one. So if you should choose to do that, you have that right here as well. This one is a little bit different than some of the others that we've had, as it was previously approved in 2021. This development had the effective date clause that we have in some of our other development agreements, where if certain requirements weren't fulfilled, then the agreement automatically terminated. Because of some changes in ownership, some deaths involved unfortunately with some people, this one got pushed aside, and the requirements of Section 5.19 were not fulfilled. The current owners were sold the property thinking that they had a ready-made development, that they could, that everything was approved, and we had to unfortunately let them know that this development agreement had been expired or terminated. So they had to produce the document. The property owners have submitted the same plat that was approved in 2021, and other The property owners have submitted the same plat that was approved in 2021, and other than some changes that staff had recommended, that the planning commission did review, and also voted to recommend, no material changes to the development agreement were made. You have the redline version of the development agreement in your packet, and that is all I have for that one. If you have any questions, the attorney's here, as well as I can answer any questions, or if you choose to create your committees or whatever you like. And I was supposed to print that out. I have them.
Steve, this was in your district before the re-drawing, right? So you...
Yeah, they made no changes from the prior approved lots, so that, the official plat has not went through the approval of planning commission, just the recommendation to approve the development agreement.
As she stated earlier, if you remember last meeting, council created an ad hoc committee to review the development agreement for the haven. This one, because it's already gone through councils, come back the same. You still have that ability to have an ad hoc committee, look at this some more if you'd like to, or continue with the motion tonight.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to send this to the ad hoc committee.
Okay, we have to make this motion. Have a motion for Mr. Moschdeller, and a second for Mr. Louise.
I want to make a comment, because this is in my district, and when I looked at it, I'm familiar with the area, but not quite understanding some of it.
Did they change the district? Is this your area?
It's my area now, and was trying to read and try to figure out. I know the new owners and the planning staff agreed to the changes, but I think we needed to go to the ad hoc committee so we can understand exactly what's going on.
All right, we have an amendment to the motion, is there any other discussion? Have a motion to send this to the ad hoc committee for a development agreement, so all those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, unanimous, we'll go back to the original motion.
Mr. Chairman, just for clarity's sake, because we need a separate ad hoc committee for each DA, can you appoint the committee for this DA as well?
I will appoint the same committee for this one as well.
Thank you.
All right, we'll go back to the amended motion, all those in favor, please raise your right hand, it's unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, for clarity of the record, are we going to postpone this matter until the ad hoc committee comes back, the first reading?
Yes, ma'am. Okay, we're gonna go to item 9D, there is a public...
Make a motion on that?
It would be better and cleaner to have the motion, yes.
Would you like to make a motion?
I'll make, why don't I just make one whole motion to move this to the ad hoc committee that is going to be composed of the same individuals in the prior ad hoc committee, and this motion, or this ordinance, will stay pending until the ad hoc committee completes their review.
Perfect.
And that is my motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
A second.
Have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Please strike that previous vote. Do we need to go back and vote on the original motion again?
I think you're good now, you postponed it.
All right, thank you. Okay, we're going to item 9D, there was a public hearing, we had no one sign up for that, so we'll call, we'll go on past the public hearing, go to first reading of ordinance number 2025-1990, "An Ordinance to Approve the Request of Colston Development to Amend the Future Land Use Map Contained in the Lancaster County, South Carolina Comprehensive Plan 2040, Changing the Future Land Use Designation for Their Property Located at the Intersection of Bailey Road and Flat Creek Road from Rural Neighborhood, TMS The planning department case number was CP-2024-1281. Planning Commission recommended by a vote of four to one to one, and the planning staff also recommended approval of the project. Ms. Williams.
Hello again. This is a request, this item and the next item, so D and E are companion action items, so I will kind of go over an overview for both of them, even though you have to act separately. This part of the request is for a request for a comprehensive plan amendment to change the future land use map of the parcel area that you have identified on the screen. The current, oh, my. The... Okay. That thing went really fast, okay, I'm sorry. So, the original request from the applicant was to change the future land use map from rural to growth area. After reviewing the information and the area, the staff recommended amending that request and changing it from a, from the growth area to a neighborhood amendment. So this request is requesting to change the future land use map from rural to neighborhood. Neighborhood is, excuse me, defined as a transitional area and neighborhoods that typically don't change, which would fit in with what the applicants are trying to do here. This is a actual Phase Two of a project that was already been approved and built out. Unfortunately, during that time, the Phase Two was not approved, so they had to come back for the approvals, and since that time, that's when we adopted the new comprehensive plan and the future land use designation for this area changed. So they are requesting this change so that they can finish the Phase Two of the Whitehall And so that is the part of the comprehensive plan. Would you like to go ahead and do that, or do you want me to finish the rezoning part?
While you're there.
I'm gonna be up here all night, chairman. So the second part of this is the companion ordinance of a rezoning request. So if you adopt and change the comprehensive plan, future land use map designation to neighborhood, that would fit into the request for rezoning. So they're requesting to rezone approximately 60 acres at the parcel identified above, at the intersection of Bailey and Flat Creek, from rural neighborhood to medium-density residential. The planning commission did recommend approval of this by a vote of four to one with one recusal, because the planning commissioner lived adjacent to this property. As we mentioned, the request is a companion to the comprehensive plan amendment. The current zoning is rural neighborhood, and MDR is not in line with the comprehensive plan under that designation, but the medium-density residential would be in line with a neighborhood future land use map designation. As I've mentioned, if approved, this would allow the developers to complete Phase Two of the Whitehall subdivision project. This is a map of the area, the blue that looks like a neighborhood is the current existing Whitehall subdivision. The outlines larger parcel is what we are discussing this evening. If you notice to the chart on the right side of the screen, this area is surrounded by MDR, RN, neighborhood business, and more RN, so it does fit in. The MDR is specifically the Whitehall development that exists now. There is frontage through the original Whitehall face for connectivity, on the frontage on Flat Creek. There is infrastructure that already exists with water and sewer, fire serviced by Antioch. The EMS station is about three and a half miles away, it's in District 3, and the electricity is provided by Duke Energy. This is, as we've mentioned, in a line, if you amend the comprehensive plan, it will be in line with the comprehensive plan. If you choose not to make that change, then it would not be in line with the comprehensive plan, because rural does not support an MDR zoning. If you have any questions, I am here, as well as the developers.
No.
No, this is just a rezoning and a comprehensive plan, so it'll be a straight MDR, to my knowledge. So the current project, if we feel like there are some issues, we could have code enforcement or stormwater to go out to evaluate that, and if there are issues, we could hold them accountable for those. However, with the new plan, it would be only the new part that they would be responsible for, and we would have to make sure that those are done with the preliminary plat.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to comment. I looked at this proposal, and you know, I'm familiar with the Whitehall, the ingress and egress there, it's the new part that's gonna be dumping into the old part, it's gonna send a lot of stended traffic into the existing neighborhood. And I have some issues with that of another, I know this is second part of Whitehall, but it's not, it's a new proposal, you know, so we need to address it that way, because it's not, it's not really grandfathered, because they're having to come back for these changes, but this being with these ingress and egress problems, I do have issues with. Also, the, there was another issue there, but it was more about the traffic dumping into the neighborhoods, and I've had a lot of people calling me that lived in this Whitehall district that's concerned with the extra traffic coming into their neighborhood, and concerns with no controls over, no HOA or anything like that, where people is a building lean-to's on the side of their house and all kind of different things in the existing So we need to stop something or get this Phase Two to fix that, of having a control over what goes in, what is done, what's allowed by the homeowners association, if it has one, and if it don't, it needs one, to protect people's property that's already exists there.
Yes, sir. The egress and ingress will be heavily looked at during the TRC. We haven't really spent a lot of time at this plat, because until you approve the comprehensive plan amendment and the rezoning, we can't really, or shouldn't maybe expend all of our resources on looking at something that might happen. We have looked at that, and we do have the knowledge, and are looking for that specifically once the next step happens, if it happens, and we can look into that. I can also look into, we have a list that we're building of current HOAs, and I could look into the current one to see if there's a management company or something involved, then maybe we could move over to the Phase One to see if we can get any of those fixed too.
And the other thing I thought of was the impact, the TIA hasn't been done in this area in a lot of years. A lot has changed since then. Does another traffic impact analysis need to be done in this area?
Yes, sir. They will have, they'll have to do another TIA if they've not started that already.
Gotcha.
A lot of people don't like to spend that money on a maybe, again, so if this is approved to move forward, then that will be one of the next steps. So for somebody that may not have heard him, he said that there has been a TIA done already, and there will be a right-hand turn into the development. I'll let him answer that question, because he probably has more letters behind his name than I do.
Before we get there, we need to get a motion and a second on this to proceed.
Motion, please. Second.
Okay, we have a motion from Mr. Harper, and a second from Mr. Neal. Now we can go ahead, go ahead.
Handy bright, 9610 Leeswood Lane Matthews, I'm the engineer for this project in Phase Two. So moving forward, any stormwater or tension ponds related to Phase Two Whitehall will be proposed entirely on that parcel, so there will be no impacts to the existing pond, we are treating that as if it's Phase One. Any new detention devices proposed for this project will be added entirely onto Phase Two.
Do we have any other questions? All right, I hear no other questions, we'll call for the vote for item 9D, first reading ordinance number 2025-1990, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, it passes four to three. Okay, we're gonna go on to item... Okay, we're gonna go on to item 9E, first reading of ordinance number 2025-1989, "An Ordinance to Amend the Official Zoning Map of Lancaster County to Rezone Approximately 60.02 Acres, TM Number 0080-00-061.00, which is Located at the Intersection of Bailey Road and Flat Creek Road from Rural Neighborhood District to the Medium Density Residential MDR District." Planning Department Case Number RSD-2024-1281. The Planning Commission recommended approval by a vote of four to one with one abstention, and the planning staff also recommended approval of the rezoning request. We have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Have a motion from Ms. McGriff, do we have a second? There was no one signed up for public hearings, so we'll go pass. Are there any other comments? Is there any other comments? Have a motion by Ms. McGriff and a second by Steve Harper. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All right, we have a list of questions that need to be answered next time. All those opposed already? I went ahead and recorded it.
I saw you.
Okay, next item. It's getting late. 9F. First reading ordinance number 2025-1991. Ordinance to approve the request of the town of Kershaw to add an addendum to the Lancaster County, South Carolina Comprehensive Plan 2040, which amendment provides a tailored land use element for the town of Kershaw. Planning Department case number is CP-2025-2062. The Planning Commission recommended approval of the addendum with proposed edit of the incorporation of Carolina Thread Trail Language by unanimous vote, and the planning staff also recommended approval of the addendum with inclusion of the Carolina Thread Trail Language edit. Ms. Williams.
Last time tonight. Thank you so much, guys, for bearing with me. This is a relatively straightforward request. This comes from the town of Kershaw, and it's coming before you as a body because this would be an amendment to our comprehensive plan. However, it does not affect any lands outside of the town limits of Kershaw. So what they're requesting is to have an addendum added in to incorporate their own future land use map and other aspects specific to the town of Kershaw. As I said, it has to come before you because it's amending our comprehensive plan, but it will only pertain to lands within the boundaries. We, as you mentioned, have both Planning Commission and planning staff recommends approval of this. While staff did a review of the original amendment, we noticed that there were, there was no mention of the future trail options for the Carolina Thread Trail, and we did add that in. Staff did check with the town of Kershaw to make sure that they were okay with that amendment, and they said that they were okay. So we're requesting approval of this ordinance tonight, well, first reading of this ordinance tonight.
We have a motion to approve.
Oh, moved.
Second. Okay, we have a motion from Mr. Neal, a second from Mr. Luis. Is there any comments? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you all.
And we're going to move on to 9H. First reading ordinance number 2025-1993. An ordinance to amend ordinance number 2025-1971 relating to the appropriation of funds and the approval of a detailed budget for Lancaster County for the fiscal year beginning July the 1st, 2025, and ending June 30th, 2026. To further provide for revenues and expenditures during the fiscal year and to provide for matters related thereto, do we have a motion to approve? Have a motion from Ms. McGriff.
Second.
Second from Mr. Graham. Ms. Pervuznak.
Thank you, Mr. Karns. Good evening, everyone. Jamie Pervuznak, Budget Director, Lancaster County. Tonight, I present you with an amendment to your FY26 adopted budget, and this is ordinance number 2025-1993, as Mr. Karns stated. There are three parts within this amendment. First is a capital project, a roof replacement, which is for the Indian Land Consolidated Fire Protection Service District. There's also a capital project for the state solicitor, an office expansion project, this is within the courthouse, and then a capital asset replacement purchase for Lancaster EMS. And this is replacing existing in-service cardiac monitors, which are currently located in the field. That's an overview, so I'll step through one at a time. The roof replacement for Indian Land is for Fire Station Two. This is a county-owned facility located out at Possum Hollow Road in the Indian Land Consolidated Fire Service District. Within your packet, you should have pictures of the damage, it's pictures of heat and sun damage to the roof. In August, the damage was assessed and quoted by two general contractors. Chief Nichols did this for us. The price range that the contractors quoted us was between $77,000 and $93,000, a little over $93,000. Those quotes are also included in your packet as reference. Our risk manager submitted this information along with the pictures to the South Carolina Association of Counties. They hold our property and liability insurance, and the insurance adjuster did say that the damages wear and tear and not covered under our existing policy. Staff does recommend and request that council vote to appropriate an amount not to exceed $100,000, and this is from Fund 52's unassigned fund balance. Appropriate the amount out of reserves into the special projects account line in Fund 52 to replace the roof for the county-owned Fire Station Two located out at Possum Hollow Road. So that's number, the first part of this amendment.
Ms. Pervuznak, will you highlight that Fund 52 is the Indian Land Fire Fund?
Yes, sir. Fund 52, as Mr. Marstall said, is the Indian Land Consolidated Fire Service Protection District Fund. It's a special revenue fund, has its own reserves and its own dollars. The second piece of this amendment is related to our state solicitor and his office expansion capital project. The state solicitor's capital project will be located on the third floor of the existing courthouse. That's unfinished space right now. County staff are working with, we've got a project manager assigned to this project, and we have a preliminary estimate of what that space would look like. The space is around 3,800 square feet. It's got about, if you think about it, it's open space, so we could have nine individual offices around the perimeter with cubicles in the center for support staff. There would be a jury space, which could also be used as a conference room, a small break room, and a judges' suite with a restroom. And then, of course, the, as part of the capital project budget, the furnishings and fixtures would be included. This is an estimate, so it's anticipated to address the construction, the electrical, the plumbing, everything to complete and outfit the space. Staff is requesting and recommending that council appropriate one time, now we're back in the general fund, one time from a general fund unassigned fund balance, an amount not to exceed $600,000. And this amount will come out of reserves, it'll be transferred into direct assistance, which is where we have the solicitor's office contract, and the project would be, the amount would be earmarked designated for the outfit and renovation of the unfinished space on the third floor of the courthouse. And then the last piece is related to Lancaster EMS. This is related to its, an equipment purchase and its capital assets for the cardiac monitors. Mr. Cato, our Mr. Cato contacted Mr. Marstall on October 1 via inter-office memorandum describing the situation and the results of a preventative maintenance inspection of 30 cardiac monitors, and these monitors are within the field. They're in-service monitors, they're in trucks, they're at headquarters, they're in ambulances. And within the memo, and in your agenda packet, there is the inspection report and the results of the testing of the 30 monitors, 12 of which came back and they had failed the test. One of the 12 EMS purchased replacement with federal grant money. So we've got 11 out there remaining that we need funding for. And so here we are tonight. So there's a quote with, within your packet, there's also a quote from a third party to replace 11 monitors, and that's an estimate of $480,000. And our recommendation, we're in a different fund now, Fund 11, which is your capital replacement fund, and that is to use the reserves from the fund, $20,000, to purchase the 11 cardiac monitors, and then we would use what's remaining in Fund 11 for the difference. It's about roughly $470,000. So in front of you, if you recall during the budget process for Fund 11, you all appropriated dollars to replace two ambulances in Fund 11 for FY26. And what this does is repurpose the original appropriation. So you would be funding one ambulance replacement in FY26 and using the remaining dollars to purchase 11 replacement cardiac monitors to be dispersed back out into the field. So then Mr. Cato would resume the annual replacement program in Fund 11 in FY27. So staff is recommending that we repurpose the original appropriation in Fund 11 from two ambulance replacements in FY26 to one ambulance replacement and the purchase of the 11 cardiac monitor replacement capital asset equipments. And then appropriate, because we need a difference to get up to that quote, about $20,000, no more than $20,000, from unassigned fund balance in Fund 11 for the purchase. And so tonight, staff respectfully asks of you to make a motion and to vote to approve the amendment to your current adopted budget and to adopt the amendment, sorry, to adopt the budget as amended.
Have a motion to approve? Or we already got a motion to approve? Never mind. Do we have any discussion?
I just want to make sure, those two ambulances were replacements, they're not new ambulances.
Correct, sir. Yes, sir.
I guess what I'm saying, to be clear, those ambulances are working, meaning we're not taking an ambulance off the street.
We're on a replacement cycle, so it may mean that one ambulance stays out there one year more.
Longer than.
But we also have some new ones, and how they move them around by where high volume uses or not, we can move the fleet around for this one year additional that we would have replaced one. So, yeah, it is not purchasing a new one, and we'll have to keep one in service a year longer.
Thank you, Mr. Marstall.
I was thinking along those lines, and I have some concerns about that. So I think probably for the next reading, I'll have some additional questions on whether we can reallocate funds from somewhere else to accommodate these needs, because I think that's probably what we need to do rather than take it from an ambulance that we all have agreed is extremely needed.
Because how many? Mr. Chairman, the new station on Vanwhack Road, how many ambulances will be stationed there? Did we know?
We're, we can build for more, but stationed initially would be two. And so we have four that we got last year, and so we have four new ones, just as the timing worked. So we'll be glad to provide more information on the fleet if you want some more information on the fleet and different things like that, so.
And just kind of more information on the reserve accounts that we have at the Indian Land Fire District and all that stuff, because I would like to know what we have and what's available.
Any other comments? Yeah, I know that we have options about the purchase of ambulances where we might could get them at a lesser cost by reusing the boxes. That might be something, but, you know, that is a consideration that we could move money out of fund balance into, make sure that we stay on the same rotation for the ambulances.
I like, I like that idea that we keep the rotation going and just look at appropriating money from somewhere else, so we don't stop the cycle. I'm okay with that, but we can approve this tonight and ask for additional information at the second reading.
Okay.
From the attorney here.
And I. That's your attorney right over there.
And I agree with that. I don't think we need to get out of rotation because we got out of rotation with our fire trucks. You can see where we're at with that now. I mean, we 30, 20 something trucks behind, and ain't gonna never get caught up from that. So I don't want to see us have the same issue with our ambulances. We need to, if they outdated, we need to replace them.
Well, if I'm hearing the will of council, we can bring back the second reading that outlines using fund balance for the purchase of these cardiac monitors. We'll bring that back for the second reading.
Be fine. Have, all right, we have a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those, oops.
On 10-15, the, we spoke to the sales rep, and the price will go up. This is a discounted price that Clay worked out at one of the recent conferences. We're looking at a $45,000 to $50,000 increase after the 15.
That's per monitor?
We approved first reading.
Yeah, I don't think we're, I think.
We didn't have an effect on.
Yeah. It's just where it, where it's.
The money's gonna come.
Yeah, where it's gonna come from eventually.
You're good, it's just that we.
I make you aware of that. Yeah.
So we can go ahead and sign the contract?
Yeah.
Okay. You have a question, Mr. Luis?
I just don't like, we're putting the cart before the horse.
Yes. Because do we need to have, do we need to have the third reading approved? Yes, so can we do this, we can't do this as a pending ordinance?
Can we do it as an amendment to say that we will approve it with the monies for the, the funding for the monitors will come out of the general fund? Can we do it that way?
You can make that amendment, yes.
Can we do it as a resolution?
No, because it's a budget, it's gotta be, it's gotta be done via, yeah. The same way it's adopted in the beginning is the way it has to be amended.
We can't spin it until the third reading?
So we can't enter into the contract until, that's what I was. Can, so can you, can I ask?
I mean, we can look at our procurement about emergency purchase. I don't know the threshold for emergency purchase. I'll have to double-check that, too.
Because the other question is, can we make it, can we, can we sign the contract but make it effective upon third reading?
That'd be a conversation with the contractor, or, yeah.
Well, hopefully the sales rep will give us a little bit of leniency there.
So if we, depending on, and I haven't seen any of this, but if the procurement director uses our general contract that was developed by myself, the general template, the termination for cause is in there, so we could sign the contract but terminate it with seven days' notice if you all did not pass this amendment in the end.
That's third reading. We're looking for weeks out.
Yeah.
You could do it with the out clause, is what I'm getting at. I understand the rush here. This would not obviously be my best legal opinion to tell you to do that, but I understand the issue with $45,000 to $50,000 increase in a potential contract as well.
I guess I'm a little confused because this memo is dated October 1st. I mean, there's three readings. There's no way we could have, we could have approved this with that discount. I mean, there's, with the October 15 deadline, that's, that's not possible. So I'm not understanding exactly why we're in this situation like this.
Well, my understanding is there just happened to be a contractor interaction with the EMS director, so, yeah.
I mean, I get it, but I'm just saying, there's no way you can get three readings in two days.
Well, we can just impress upon the contractor the need to maintain the price. See where it goes.
Well.
All we can do is.
Give us another two weeks or whatever.
It's gotta be a month.
The council has to act on it three readings. Sure, they want to make a deal, they would understand that, so.
You also do have the language subject to budget appropriation that can be included into that contract.
That's what I was.
You see, that's what I was saying.
And it should be in, if, again, if procurement utilizes the standard template contract that I've assisted with developing, that language is in there.
Yep.
You'd have the termination.
Already, we'd have the termination, and we'd have the budget appropriation.
So you could do it with the budget appropriation, and then it terminates automatically if you do not appropriate this money.
That's what I would, that's where I would go.
So where are we at?
I think we can just approve it, we can get it signed up, but it has to have the budget appropriation contingency.
Right, so my directives would be for the procurement director to either. Right, so, so my directives would be for the procurement director to either utilize the county's standard general template contract, and if the contractor pushes otherwise, we'll make sure those two clauses are included, a termination with seven days' notice for any reason, as well as the budget appropriation.
And we can make the changes in the second reading.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Do we need to make any changes now?
No, sir.
All right. So we have a motion, a second.
Thank you, Ms. Merk Dupont.
Got some discussion on how to make all this work. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, it passes unanimously. Okay, now to item 9I, first reading ordinance number 2025-1994, an ordinance to amend the Lancaster County Code, Chapter 6, Article 1, related to the definition of animal control officer for Lancaster County, and to add a section to the Lancaster County Code providing for commissioned county code enforcement officers. Mr. Marston, have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Have a motion from Mr. Luis.
Okay.
Have a second from Mr. Harper. Mr. Marston.
Great, thank you, Mr. Chairman, council members. So as part of the FY '26 budget process, county council authorized a hiring of three new animal control officers under the Animal Shelter Director in order to convert the existing animal control officer positions under the sheriff's office to become patrol deputies to address the sheriff's request for more patrol deputies. So we have got to make some ordinance change or language change with the animal control ordinance to reflect the animal control officers are now, not under the sheriff's office, but are now under the Animal Shelter Director or under the General County. So this language that you see in front of you takes that action just specific to how the animal control officers report. There may be some other things we want to do with the animal control ordinance, and we'll bring that back to you at a later date. We also want to highlight in tonight's action, there's a second point about addressing the definition and reporting clarification in the ordinance about the county code for commissioned enforcement officers, code enforcement officers. The process to establish commissioned officers in the county and define their ability to enforce county ordinances and laws is important for these positions to be able to assist in the prosecution of violations in front of the magistrate's court, but also defines it who can write municipal or county violations. So we've got two things in front of you tonight. One, just changing the ordinance for animal control to put the officers under animal shelter, and then we're adding a new section to the county code as it pertains to commissioned county code enforcement officers, how they are sworn in, their terms of office, what their duties are. And so these are the two things we're presenting tonight. And again, I know there's been some interest over time about making other changes to the animal control ordinance. I know our Animal Shelter Director has some other changes aside from these, so we will look to have additional conversation. But in order to make the new animal control officers ready to go, we've got to make this change in the ordinance so they can start enforcing the ordinance.
Any discussion?
So the only revision is what's stricken through?
Correct. And then, yes.
All right. Call for the vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, it's unanimous. Okay, we're gonna go on to Section 10, Discussion and Action Items. TNA approval of becoming involved in ultra-processed food litigation. Mr. Marston.
Mr. Chairman, there's conversation about the county's interest in being party to a national lawsuit that is being proposed to address the native impacts of the ultra-processed food litigation. There are a number of manufacturers of ultra-processed foods who are looking to have a settlement, seeking recovery from that settlement. This would allow the council to be party to any settlement with the manufacturers, and so then the motion will authorize me to indicate the county's willingness to be party and be represented by outside counsel for this nationwide legislation or litigation.
Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion from Ms. McGriff, a second from Mr. Graham. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those approve, it's unanimous. Okay, we're gonna go on to item 10B, receive information and take desired action regarding appointments and/or reappointments to various boards and commissions. Ms. Simpson.
Okay, Mr. Chairman and council members, the first appointment for your consideration is an appointment to the Historical Mission for District 4. History Professor Richard Van Hall has applied to serve as a District 4 representative.
Have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Have a motion from Mr. Harper. We have a second.
Second.
Second from Mr. Neal. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. It's unanimous. Okay.
Okay, the second appointment for your consideration tonight is for the Library Board for District 7. You have two applicant, applicant, Solomon Gold Diamond. I did note in the agenda that he would need to resign from the Board of Assessment Appeals. I did not have that resignation before the agenda was posted, but we do have that now. And Marna Mortimer. So we just need a motion to appoint one of those people.
I make a motion to approve Mr. Gold Diamond.
Second.
Have a motion from Mr. Luis, a second from Ms. McGriff. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, it's unanimous.
The third item for consideration is appointments to the Health and Wellness Commission for various positions. Please remember that you recently changed the membership of that commission, and so these appointments were people that had previously been serving as agency appointments. So Anna Hittson were asking to move as the District 5 representative. Bridgette Harris were asking to be moved to an at-large representative. And I missed one. Who is another one? There is another one.
Dawson.
Yes, Robert Dawson is an at-large representative.
All right, do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Have a motion from Ms. McGriff.
Second.
Second from Mr. Graham. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Passes unanimously.
And just for your information, are the current board commission vacancies, which do not include what you voted on tonight, and upcoming board commission expirations?
Okay, I need a motion to go into executive session in regards to two items, the receipt of legal advice subject to the attorney-client privilege regarding a potential contractual matter related to the P Card audit and discussion of personnel matters pursuant to South Carolina Code of Laws 30-4-70A1 related to the county administrator's office and the county administrator's We will, the chief financial officer is not here tonight, so...
We can invite a representative if you want from one of the contract, the contract discussion.
We will leave that possibility open if we need to call him back to discuss the first item, and then Joni Winters of the Winters Law Firm to discuss the second item. Do we have a motion going to executive session?
I would like to add our county attorney to come in in on the second part.
On which part?
The second part, the discussion of personnel matters, yes.
No, sir.
Why not?
We already have attorney coming in, Ms. Winters.
She's our council attorney.
No, sir.
He's not our labor attorney.
Nope.
I don't think we should bypass her to...
She's specializing in labor. We have somebody for that.
But she could sit in and know what's going on, counsel. I mean...
She don't need to know that. That's between us, between council. It's a council's decision if we have an attorney.
So Mr. Moss, just to follow the procedure, Mr. Moss Della has made a motion.
No, he made a suggestion.
I'll make a motion if that's what it takes.
Well, I won't be in that meeting because I'm not, that's...
Are you making a motion?
Yeah.
I'll second it just to have a discussion.
We have a motion and a second to have Ms. Merk Dupont in the executive session during the administrators, discussion of the administrators' contract.
Indeed. No, we're gonna keep it to the point because we have an attorney, Joni Winters, two attorneys to make a decision about something that we've already been discussing. Plus, I, I think that's too many years in there. So I think we, as council, with our contracted attorney, can make a decision. We've got a legal question, we can, we'll have Ms. Winters in there to do it. So I don't see a need for our attorney to be in there for our county administrator's evaluation. I just don't.
You, just to make the point, you just said "our attorney."
She's the attorney for council.
She's the attorney for council.
But we, we've got, we've got a person that specializes in labor law.
Right.
She doesn't specialize in labor law.
So here's...
Don't let me finish. If, if Jenny could do it, we wouldn't need a Joni. We wouldn't be paying for a consultant and an attorney to have that discussion. And if that's the way you're gonna do it, I will not be in that meeting because I don't want to be a part of it. Yeah. I, I, I mean, if we're gonna do things, y'all, let's do them right.
I think I's doing it right.
No, 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 no.
We're not leaving our county attorney out. She needs to know what's going on with everything that's going on.
She's not his, she's our attorney. What is she's gonna, what is, she's gonna be in there for the administrator's evaluation? That's what I don't understand.
I might have a question for her and...
Well, we'll send her, send out and bring her in. But that discussion to me is confidential to the attorney that we've hired to do the evaluation of our county administrator. I don't see any need for an additional attorney in the room when we're talking about this evaluation, just like when we do her, our attorney, Jenny's evaluation. Do we need Dennis in the room?
It's different.
Oh, so it's different?
Yes, because our county attorney represents county council. It's tied, and she has attorney-client...
Let me ask you a question.
Hold on, you said, you said, "let me finish," so I let you finish, now let me finish.
Why are we bringing Joni in if we've got an attorney?
So what I was saying was there's attorney-client privilege, so one of the things that you had mentioned earlier was your concern about information leaking. Information is not gonna leak from an attorney.
Really?
Yeah, really.
You're an attorney, right?
100%. There's attorney-client privilege. So items that are discussed during that session are privileged. They cannot, they, they, they should be.
Should be.
100%.
Should be 100%. That's why, to keep anything from, from somebody saying, "she said this, she said that," we've got an attorney that we are contracting to go through this evaluation. So my point is, why do we need two attorneys in this room when we're discussing the evaluation?
The point is, I don't think anytime any lawyers is done and is hired through the county to bring in for extra counsel or handle something she can handle, she still needs to be involved in it. Just because she's our attorney. She's our county attorney, she's our council attorney. Anything that we, we do, we should not leave her out when it comes to litigation stuff or anything like that.
So in other words, we don't need to call in consultants if it's something that she can't handle?
But they don't have her to sit in there.
We're, we're, we're making an assumption that there are things that we, she can't handle.
No, I'm not saying that. I'm saying if she couldn't handle it, why would we get a consultant?
You just, you just, Charlene, can I finish? Are you done?
I don't know, it's depending on what you're gonna say.
Or are you gonna interrupt me?
Well, many times, we, we hire outside counsel, and counsel sits in on those discussions.
Correct.
It's an evaluation.
Here's, here's what I would suggest. If you want to amend your motion, I think we go in there and we leave the option open to bring in our county attorney.
Now, I can live with that.
I'll second that.
I can live with that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm in my motion.
So it's seconded? Okay. There's a motion and a second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. We are in executive session. We are in executive session.
Okay, do I have a motion to come out of executive session?
No.
I have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, second, all those in favor. We are out of executive session, Ms. Merk Dupont.
Mr. Chairman, for the record, council met in executive session in regards to two items, the receipt of legal advice, subject to the attorney-client privilege regarding a potential contractual matter related to the P. Card audit, and the discussion of personnel matters pursuant to South Carolina Code of Law 30-4-70A1, related to the county administrator's office and the county administrator's evaluation. No motions were made, no votes were taken.
Have a motion to adjourn?
No move.
We stand adjourned.